Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, June 3rd, 2024 meeting of the Board of Selectmen, Highway Commissioners and Cemetery Commissioners. Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman.
Just want to say before anything else, this meeting is being recorded. Mr. Sullivan.
Before we get started, I know I speak to the entire board and people in town. Steve Barowski, Corbin Roadloss's wife, Alzheimer's. Steve was a longtime member of the Police Evaluating Committee and other things in town, and his brother Larry was a long-term employee, highway superintendent. So we send our sympathies to the Barowski family and wish nothing but the best for those folks going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Next, it's not on the agenda, but considering this is Mr. Marcy's last meeting since his election to state representative, the chair would like to yield the gavel to Mr. Marcy for the final meeting. Just asking for unanimous consent of the board.
Okay.
Mr. Marcy.
Thank you. Harry? Oh, thank you. All right. Let me get my bearings here. Next up on the agenda is citizens' comments. Is there anyone here tonight that'd like to speak on anything that's not currently on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Item three, the approval of minutes from May 20th, 2024. Mr. Siggenavage.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of May 20th, 2024.
Motion by Mr. Siggenavage, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion?
No.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, guys.
Not to release on the next one. Mr. Chair.
Oh. Would you like to change that?
No, not on the executive.
The executive.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Got it, got it, got it. I just saw that.
He's new. Glasses.
Yeah, well, I have my distance contacts in. Approval of executive session minutes of February 26th, 2024. Mr. Siggenavage?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes of February 26th, 2024 and not to release.
Motion by Mr. Siggenavage is our second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Landry. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Number five, we have an appointment. The sergeant tonight, Dudley Police Department, Police Chief, and Phil Magus is here. Chief Magus? I mean, not Chief, Chief, Chief Kowalski and Officer Magus.
Good evening. A few weeks ago, Sergeant Paul Sepatelli retired, and we had a vacancy. The board approved to fill that vacancy with a patrolman, and then last selectmen meeting, the board approved to fill the sergeant position. I posted the position internally, and there were four qualified officers. I approached all four of them, and three of them stated that Officer Magus deserved the position, and at that point, they would not be putting in their name in the hat. That alone right there speaks volumes. But let me just give a little history about Officer Magus. Officer Magus was hired as a reserve police officer in 2006. In 2012, he was promoted to full-time and attended the Reading Police Academy. After graduating the academy, he was assigned to second and third shift patrol. In addition to his regular duties since then, he has taken on responsibilities, including being a field training officer. He's the sexual assault investigator. He's a taser instructor. He's a CGS representative for the department, and for the last eight years, he has worked as the school resource officer. That position alone is a tremendous responsibility. There's over, how many kids at Shepherd Hill?
Over 900.
Over 900 kids that he protects every day and maintains order as much as he can and prevents a lot of problems. He's also in the process of trying to get his certification in accident reconstruction. He's got a couple more classes before he finishes that. He currently holds a bachelor's degree in psychology from Worcester State. He has attended several leadership classes. He, on top of all the duties I just explained, which are additional, he has also been very active in grant writing for the department. Overall, Officer Magus has applied for grants that secured over $200,000 for the Town of Dudley for the police department. Most of that was equipment, some traffic enforcement. Most recently, the grant that he applied for, we were able to replace laptops in the cruisers, which cost about $4,000 each. On top of that, Officer Magus has also been very active with his IT experience for the department. He works very closely with the department's official IT person and the cybersecurity person, but he takes care of a lot of issues that come up that save the town hundreds and thousands of dollars over the years. So it's my honor, based on his experience, his dedication, his professionalism throughout his career, that I'm recommending that Officer Phil Magus be appointed to position as sergeant effectively tonight.
Thank you, Chief. Phil, would you like to address the board and everybody here tonight?
Well, I actually put together a speech. I'm gonna try to be as brief as possible.
He gets that humor from the high school.
So first and foremost, I'd like to thank the chief, Lieutenant Anis, my wife Dana, and my kids, who have stood by me to realize not just the dream of becoming a police officer, but having the opportunity to become a sergeant. Sergeant Poplowski, Sergeant Sepatelli, whose shoes I will do my best to fill, he's actually here right now. Sergeant Ramelard and Sergeant Boyd, Officer Ferrera, Daniel Spacheco-Glowaki, and Officer Smith, and all the officers that have been able to come in tonight. I'd like to thank the Town of Dudley, you, the selectmen, whose kids I have worked with throughout the last eight years at the high school, and most importantly, the community that I will continue to be serving. Lastly, I'd like to also thank the Dudley-Chelton School District, Shepherd Hill, Dudley Middle, Dudley L., and Mason Road, Mr. Alwell, the principal, the assistant principals, Mr. Leech and Mr. Resner, for actually putting up with me for the last eight years, and the parents and the kids who I've worked with for the last and who have actually taught me how to be a better father, parent, and police officer. That's it.
That's fantastic. Board members, Mr. Sullivan.
Well, as we say, it's not very often we get to do a good thing. This is a great promotion for the department. It's a great promotion for the community at large. I've known Phil probably 20 years, I bet at least. We had children that were the same age. I'd seen Phil in action as a parent. My children went to Shepherd Hill. I know how Phil treated my youngest daughter, who had some issues in mental health stuff, and Phil was always there. So this is a great move for the town, and when we make the motion, I can just whole heartedly support Mr. Sergeant Magus going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Johnson?
I'd like to reiterate what you do up on the hill. It's just, I know, just part of your overall career and job, and I just appreciate all you've done for, once again, for my family and 1.0, 2.0, and 3.0, and ran through that school. It's much appreciated, and your police work is excellent and will be appreciated in the next level. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Landry.
Mr. Chairman, it's a lot of respect that goes out to patrolmen Magus and Chief Kowalski. And with everything they've done for our children, our community, and us, I don't want to hold this up anymore. I'd like to make a motion to move forward the promotion of Patrolman Phil Magus to sergeant, based on the recommendation of the police chief.
Second. Motion by Mr. Landry, seconded by Mr. Siggenavage. Discussion.
Yeah, could I get mine in?
Can.
I want to echo what they said. I mean, with my kids as well. And how you're sitting here now, you've got that calm demeanor. Don't know if you're, no, seriously, don't know what your emotion is, which is a good thing, I imagine, in your line of work. But honestly, you're a class act. This is an easy vote when people who could have applied for this position, who probably will be reporting to you eagerly step aside. Like you said, chief, that speaks volumes. Easy vote. Thank you.
And for me, Phil, I've known you a long time. Very, very, very happy for you to get this. My kids thought the world of you. Jessica, you know, gets to see you every day. And that just, again, it speaks a lot to your ability and just a commitment to the community. So thank you for stepping up and wanting to do this. This is, this is super easy for all of us. Thank you. So I'll call that to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Congratulations, Phil.
Thank you. Right in front of the chair.
I had one too, but I, you know which one I was gonna tell. Want your family to come up?
Yes.
Come on, guys. Come on, Dana. I have two kids. Go on.
Laurie's gonna swear him in after this.
Yeah, then he gets sworn in, right.
My side.
I'll move. Everybody, stay right where you are. Thank you.
Well, a couple of them.
Good people in the back.
Nice job, guys. It is good stuff. We don't get to do that very often, guys. So for everybody at home, this is a big deal. Fantastic. Congratulations, Sergeant. By moving on to item six, oh, yes, there it is. Laurie, Town Clerk Laurie Smith will now make this official for Sergeant Magus. Laurie?
Sergeant Magus, did you raise your hand please? I, Phil Magus, just solemnly swear.
I, Phil Magus, Officer Laurie.
That I will faithfully perform my duties as sergeant.
That I will faithfully perform my duties as sergeant.
Of the Dudley Police Department.
Of the Dudley Police Department.
As sergeant, as sergeant, I will.
As sergeant, I will.
Represent the Town of Dudley in a professional manner.
Represent the Town of Dudley in a professional manner.
Provide leadership to the department.
Provide leadership to the department.
And obey the Constitution and laws of the United States.
And obey the Constitution and laws of the United States.
As well as the Constitution and laws.
As well as the Constitution and laws.
Of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
So help me God.
Phil, do you want your hand?
Good man, Paul. Thank you.
And just on a quick side note, Sergeant Paul Sepatelli is here. I'm not sure if the board wants to just quickly recognize him for years of service.
Bring him up.
Bring him up. Paul, come on up. Thanks, Paul. Great job, man.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul, good luck. Good luck.
Thank you.
Yep.
Under the table, we say some words.
Laurie, I mean, Debbie, yeah, yeah. Well, we need to put this out on Facebook, too.
Picture.
Picture time.
The town page.
Town page.
Town page, yeah.
You didn't tell me there was gonna be any pictures. You're good. You're good. Good, good, good.
There's cameras everywhere.
Okay, gentlemen. Jeez, thank you.
Thank you. Good luck, Sepe. All right, that's good stuff, guys.
Well, Mr. Chair, let's just officially, let's just officially recognize Sergeant Sepatelli's retirement. I know we talked about it, and we had Kerry sign a letter on our behalf, but this is good stuff for Paul Sepatelli, too. I wish him well in his retirement, his career change. Paul was another one. You've never heard a bad word about Paul. Good police work, good solid 20-year-plus employee. I certainly thank him for all his efforts.
Hundred percent. Hundred percent. Well said, Mr. Sullivan. All right, moving on. Item six, we have some licenses. Carmen Vic, SEMA Sub Shop LLC does business as Subway, located at 157 West Main Street in Dudley. Manager, Mayank Patel. Are they here tonight?
He's not here.
Not here. Mayank, anybody? All right.
Mr. Chair, make a motion. We table it. It'll come up in our next meeting.
Yep.
Automatically.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Landry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous. All right. Item seven, Town Administrator's Report. Mr. Roto.
Mr. Chairman, this time I've set aside for the Board of Selectmen to have a chance to speak publicly with our finalist, the town accountant. Everybody should have a copy of her. Her name is Sarah Munjo, and she, everybody should have a copy of her resume in front of them, and I just wanted to turn it over to the board. We've had several interviews so far. She is by far the most qualified and the one that both the outgoing town accountant and I are recommending to the board at this time.
Okay. Sarah, you wanna come on up?
Hi, good evening.
Good coming in.
Can you hear me okay?
You can. Would you like to tell everybody a little bit about yourself and why you applied for the job and?
Sure. Let's see, I'm a CPA. I've been working in the public sector for the past 20 years. I began, well, actually, I've been working as an accountant by far longer than that. I worked in the private industry for Hologic when they were formed. And then I went to Bentley, and I worked at Arthur Andersen for two years as a senior accountant. I left that. I did some consulting, had my family, and then I entered state service with the University of Massachusetts. I worked as a program administrator for a program out of the medical school for four years, and in that capacity, I was a business manager. And then when my daughter got to be of school age, I wanted to work full-time, and I took a position as an internal auditor for the University of Massachusetts President's Office. That position audited all of the five campuses. I was a little overqualified for that position and was asked to step into the role as university controller. So my role as a university controller allowed me to consolidate all of the financial information for the five campus system, the university, as well as lead the controllers in establishing standards for government, for accounting standards, making sure everything was done consistently throughout the whole system. I left that role. I was the controller for six years and left that role to join Suzanne Bump's office as I was a manager of accounting, of auditing, and was bumped up to a director two years into that. And in that capacity, I worked for, worked with higher education institutions, as well as the authorities within the Commonwealth, and provided performance audits for them, making sure that they were running efficiently and effectively, and they had strong internal controls. I left in January and took a position with Barry Dunn as a consultant for government compliance and did not like the position. I resigned effective two weeks ago and applied for this position. I applied for municipal accountant position because I worked with a coach, and the coach said that my strengths would lead me to happiness working in this environment. So consider me.
That's a great summary. Mr. Sullivan.
I'm gonna defer to Kerry for us. This is more his wheelhouse than mine.
Certified fraud examiner.
Yes.
I just want to get it all. Certified government financial manager and the CPA.
Yes.
That's a lot of continuing add you've got to do every year, the credits. But certified fraud examiner, what made you want to, well, you answered the question. You worked with a coach and said this is where you'd be happy, and isn't that what it's all about, where you'd be happy? I think what I'd like to know, I mean, you're an extremely well-qualified candidate. How did you find out about this position?
I went through the MMA. The position was posted on MMA, and then I have a colleague who was the accountant in Shrewsbury. She, you know, I talked to her a little bit about the town. She, it's a very collaborative environment with the accountants throughout the state. They do a lot of training and resource led by the MMAAA, the Association of Accountants. So, you know, she had a good vibe, and she knows Tom Scanlon, the accountant.
I'm sorry?
She, she works with, she worked with Tom Scanlon.
Okay.
Your accountant, and.
I'm sorry, I just.
Oh, yeah. They had nothing but good things to say about the town, and it's a nice fit. It's a small town. I'm from Grafton, as you can know. A lot of parallels there. They're a little bit bigger, but I grew up in a small town and stay still here. and stay still here, so.
Well, I'm, I'd love to have you join us. Well-qualified, you seem. Grounded. I don't know how else to say it. You seem.
Yeah. I want to add that since COVID, my profession has changed significantly. It's become very remote, and that's not me. I am a people person. I've had my skills tested, and I come out like the personal side. So more of a liaison, working with people. I like to be with people, and a big turnoff for the consulting role that I just left was because it was 100% remote. How do you consult and give good advice when you can't see? I mean, you have to look at the whole person and be able to, you know, you can read a situation so much better.
It's better for communication, too. Makes the job easier.
Oh, yes, definitely.
As opposed to someone who just sits in a cubicle in the corner and.
Yeah. Well, a lot of auditing. I've done a lot of auditing, and it's virtually impossible to do a complete and thorough audit when you're remote. I mean, so.
Before anyone else asks any questions, I just have one more. Do you have any questions for us?
Um, what keeps you guys awake at night? What, from an accounting perspective or what are the key things? The concerns of the town?
Does anyone want to?
You should probably watch a budget cycle.
Yeah, that's pretty much what it is because our tax rate is where it is. We don't have the revenue, and we don't have a lot of businesses. Amazon isn't coming here. Microsoft isn't coming, you know, and costs are going up. The school formula does not work well for us. It just doesn't work well for us because of our demographics, so we have to make do with what we have, and it's uncomfortable. But we figure it out. It's painful, but we figure it out. That's, yeah, that's what keeps me up at night is budget time. How are we going to do this? How can we do this without an overhead?
Seems like you get it to work, so.
Mr. Sullivan?
I'm not here today.
First off, I just want to welcome you. Can't say we're not going to appoint you tonight. This is an impressive resume. And your question, what keeps us up at night, specifically to me, I'll be honest, not a lot because I know we have a solid financial team. Our current accountant is tremendous. I know we do the best we can. Kerry touched on it. Revenues, we all, anybody that wants to be honest has to admit that it's strictly a revenue-driven problem. We do more with less. It's one of Mr. Massey's favorite sayings. We run a full-service town, police, fire, highway, ambulance service. I like your resume. I'm looking at the things that you highlight, that you touch upon, all your stuff, all your things with the UMass system, state auditor, you know, you're talking about risk association with the distribution of federal money. At one point, people were accused, is probably a strong word, but people were accusing us of having misappropriated money, which was proven not to be true. Recently passed the article at town meeting where we're going to have a citizen audit committee, which is going to have, oversight's the right word, but the intent is to help our financial team look for inefficiencies and other things, and it looks like you already have been doing that for quite a while.
Yes.
So I think, based on what I see, as Kerry said, I agree. I like your demeanor. I think you're going to be an excellent fit. I think your skill set is going to fit perfectly to what people at home have been clamoring for, for a while now, and I just hope that when you do come on, everybody gives you a fair chance, gives you a shot to probably have to dive right in, no offense, but, you know, get your feet wet and we'll be moving forward. So I think it's going to be a good fit.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Landry?
You can go first.
Mr. John?
Please. I have something interesting to say, I could tell.
Any question? What's the first 90 days in this position look like to you?
Well, I'm going to have to learn the VEDR system, okay? I know that the cash reconciliations need to be completed. I think they're a little bit behind. I'm willing to roll up my sleeves. I'm willing to go wherever needed, work with Deb. I know Deb wants to retire. I think getting affiliated with the MMAA and the sources there, finding a mentor from another town, and also working with Deb to get established. 90 days would take us through the audit, so I think year-end would take a significant priority in getting the books closed up, and I think that's going to take through 90 days. We're sitting on June, the beginning of June, so.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Landry?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Welcome. It's nice to hear about you. I, too, did work under Suzanne Bump as Secretary of Labor. I know that in your background, a couple of things that I can bring out. I work with our accountant, auditor, Deb, a lot in the financial team, and there's a lot that you bring, such as helping state and local government agencies, knowing how to increase revenues, reduce costs, and improve performance, follow appropriate diagnostic data collection, fact-finding, and data analysis practices. That's important. Develop concise summaries, reports, and presentations of complex data to leadership. That's going to be a big thing. Provide ad hoc assessments and briefings in response to requests. A little bit of your background, technical competence, human relations skills, writing communication skills, strong in data analytical skills, and assist with project tasks such as tracking, reporting project progress, maintaining project document repository, and reviewing what you have for quality assurance. And those are just some of the things that you bring to the table that we need, that we really need. And I'm impressed, and I looked into you, and I like what I found very much, and it's nothing but positive for the town in a big way. So I'm looking forward to it.
I would love to be able to share my skill set with the town. I think I could help in some of your areas.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. And thank you, Sarah, for putting your name forward. You know, we're, you know, we're looking for, you know, high-quality candidates, you know, that want to, you know, come and work in Dudley. You know, sometimes that's not always the easiest thing to find, but you seem like a very great killer combination, so to speak, of, you know, people's skills and, you know, working together collaboratively because you'll need to do that with the other, you know, departments to, you know, to get your, you know, fulfill a lot of your roles, functions. But I like your background. Like I said, the auditor, you, you know, you've managed all of these things, and I understand, you know, what we need, and I think you'll come up to speed pretty quickly. So thank you. It was really nice to meet you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Mr. Ruda?
I'd love to see you in two weeks.
Yes.
Yeah, that was going to be my follow-up. Mr. Chairman, if the Board is currently in favor, I'd like to have the opportunity to sit down with Sarah this week when she's available, and if we can come to terms, continue forward with hopefully an appointment at our next, our next Selectmen's meeting.
Mr. Chairman, we want to give the Administrator authority on conclusion of successful negotiations. Just let him be the Administrator.
So moved.
If we need to.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Siggen Everich, seconded by Mr. Landry.
Did that make sense?
It absolutely does.
Yeah, why dance around?
Why? If they can come to terms, make it happen.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I'll still, if we do come to terms, we'll still, it's a Board of Selectmen appointment, so it'll require a vote, but we can retroactive it.
Just give them conditional approval.
Great idea, Mr. Sullivan.
That is, that way the candidate leaves knowing.
Knowing that we, you have the support of the Board.
Thank you.
She can start early, that's all.
Yep, right.
Thank you so much.
Any other comments on this? Okay, we'll vote on that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous?
Thank you again.
Thank you so much.
Sarah.
Thank you.
These are great stuff. Great stuff, guys. Right? All right, item A, Public Business. Board of Health is here. I see somebody. They want permission to hold the annual bike rodeo in the upper parking lot of the Town Hall on Thursday, June 27, 2024, from 5:00 to 7:00. Ms. Johnson. Hi.
You said everything I was going to say.
You can say it again in a better way.
Permission to have the bike rodeo. All right, so this is the Board's fourth year. One time, we tried Nichols. It didn't work out, I think, just the time-wise, so we changed it to a Thursday night. We had a great turnout last year. We aimed for 50. We wanted 50 kids to show up. We had 49. It was beautiful. The night was like today. Children's Hospital comes. It's just a great turnout. Sergeant Popowski helps us with the, I call it a map. It's not a map, but, you know, the tracks, whatever it's called. The kids go around on the bikes. It's just a great night. It really is a great time, so we're hoping maybe we'll get 75. I don't know, but June 27, 5:00 to 7:00. We're asking for a bunch of volunteers who want to come. Maybe you all can come. But anyhow, we're hoping we'll continue with spreading the word. We're going to go to Strawberry Festival the week before. Superintendent Lamarche spreads the word. We go to the Boys and Girls Club, the library. Jen Tex is going to come at the table this year, so they're going to spread the word out, too. The SWEC School, I share the flyer with them. So we try to get the word out there, see as many people as we can come and come get their bikes fixed. Then we give out the helmets, so it's a really great turnout. Yeah.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
Mr. Siggen Everich.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we grant permission to the Board of Health to hold the annual bike rodeo in the upper parking lot of the Town Hall on Thursday, June 27, 2024, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Siggen Everich, seconded by Mr. Landry. Discussion.
Quick comment, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sullivan.
This is one of the things that Dudley does that makes it what it is. We talk about that. When people like to point out the negativity, this is good stuff. This is like Halloween Spooktacular. This is like Santa. This is when people can really come and see Dudley shine. And I was going to say, if you just tell them we're going to design a playground again, maybe we'll get 75 kids, like we did last time. We were there for the cartoon thing there, but I'm sure you'll do all the better. I thank you, the Board.
Hope so. Thank you.
Put it on.
Yeah, this is good stuff.
Very good. It's, I put this into the category, Mr. Joseph used to say, catching people doing something good, so this is what that is.
You know, maybe you, it's your last meeting, you could come be Dudley. Just saying.
Yeah, that's pretty good. Absolutely.
All right, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you, Ruda.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, everybody, come out and support Board of Health and their bike rodeo. All right, item AP, Year-End Transfers. Mr. Ruda?
Do we have the thing?
Mr. Chairman, this is a, this is the traditional vote to transfer some money around at the end of the year. One of them is a transfer for election expenses, and one, another one is to update the police budget to be able to purchase a cruiser that was authorized. We had a lot of discussion during budgeting time. A cruiser that was authorized is part of a three-year plan, and of course, over the course of three or four years, since the time it was authorized, it's gone up about $11,000. So it's being built for us. Capital improvements signed off on it. The chief has brought it up publicly many times. So we'd like to do some, begin with our year-end transfers. I'll just, I'll send the sheet over.
Yeah, Mr. Sullivan, you want to?
I'm just going to.
Oh, clerk.
I'm just going to emphasize, Mr. Chairman, this is what we do every year because we're a bottom-line budget. Some have a surplus. We always move monies around to make up the shortfall, so sometimes it appears a line item may have been spent. Somebody might question where it's gone, and I'm sure the accountant can always prove it, but this is just a simple housekeeping. We do it all the time. Once again, the financial team gets together and figure it out and make it work.
Okay. I'll hand this to the clerk. Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this year-end transfer fiscal 2024 to Town Dudley Reserve Fund Transfer, which looks like it needs FAA approval only, from account 000113157800000 FAA Reserve Fund, $11,334.76 to account 030021057802025 Police Cruiser, approved at 5:24 Town Meeting, same amount. And number two, year-end transfer, May-June, need FAA Board Selectmen approval from account 0001161571500000 Election Expense, $491.77 to account 00011615700000 Town Clerk's Expense. Grand total is $11,826.53, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Do you have a motion to approve the transfers?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Landry, seconded by Mr. Siggen Everich. Discussion.
Mr. Chairman, as usual, this is, requires the Board of Selectmen to vote on the transfer, and the FAA to counter-vote once the Board of Selectmen take their vote. The first transfer that Mr. Landry mentioned is coming from the FAA reserves.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? And then we sign on our side, right?
Yep.
Send it that way first. See that? While we're signing that, item 8C is a vote to approve date for a special meeting, Town Meeting, per bylaw, Monday, October 21, 2024, at 7:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Siggen Everich, seconded by Mr. Landry and Mr. Sullivan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you.
Yes.
Item 8D, Cole Messier, our amazing library director is here. She's done an update on the library for everybody. I'm grateful she came tonight.
Thanks for inviting me.
Yes, of course.
I have a quick little presentation. It takes seven minutes. No pressure. Next time, we'll just have a little infographic. But John had asked for kind of a presentation on how the library spends its money, and in order to understand how the library spends its money, you kind of have to understand state aid, and I know you guys do, but I'm not sure if most people do, so I'm just going to explain a little bit about that. All right. Okay, so libraries receive funding from the town, and they also receive some funding from the state called State Aid. The MBLC explains, quote, "State Aid to Public Libraries is an annual voluntary program administered by the MBLC that distributes local aid to municipalities. This encourages municipal support and improvements for public library service. It bolsters reciprocal resource sharing, compensates for differences in municipal funding capacities, and offsets costs to libraries." If you want to learn more, you can go to the MBLC website and read all about State Aid. So the town is required to meet the municipal appropriation requirement to receive funds. We call this the MAR. Quote, Mass General Law, Chapter 78, Section 19A, states that a municipality must appropriate a figure of at least the average of the last three years' municipal appropriations to the library for operations. This is increased by 2.5% in order to be certified for state aid to public libraries. So there are a few other requirements, too. We have to be open to all residents of the Commonwealth. We cannot charge for normal library service. We have to be open a certain amount of hours per week. There are personnel requirements, a materials expenditure requirement, which we will talk about in a second. We have to lend books and other materials to other libraries in the Commonwealth, and then we have our annual reporting requirements, which actually is, we are coming up on, starts July 1 and ends August 17, I want to say. So we'll be working on that. So here is our fund fact of the night. So the MAR, which is the materials expenditure requirement, is something that the state sets for libraries. Hours is 16%. The state tells us that's what it is. We have to spend this on books, downloadable content, so things like eBooks, e-audio, our library of things, which would be like Wi-Fi, hotspots, memory. our library of things, which would be like Wi-Fi, hotspots, memory kits. And then, of course, museum passes count towards our MAR also. So what does this look like? Here are the 22 through 24 FY numbers for the state aid we received. The MBLC explains, quote, "State aid to libraries has always been listed as an offset item on the annual charity sheet distributed by the Department of Revenue. Because of this classification as an offset item, state aid received by municipalities under the authority of this program can be spent without appropriation. In addition, state budget language signed by the governor at the beginning of each fiscal year specifies that, quote, 'Any payment made under this appropriation shall be deposited with the treasurer of such city or town and held as a separate account, and shall be expended by the public library of such city or town without appropriation.'" So the $34,328 that you guys see under FY 25 is the anticipated amount that we should be receiving for the library this year. So what does our budget cover? It covers salaries, utilities, materials, consortium fees, maintenance contracts, and then we have a small line for expenses, things like custodial supplies, office supplies, and other small incidentals. What we don't have in our budget is programming. So state aid can be used for any library need that the budget does not cover, such as programming, and also building repairs. We know that those are really hard to predict from year to year. And also things like computer upgrades. So the town of Dudley is lucky to have this money because the library would otherwise be requesting additional funds from the taxpayers to cover these necessities. So what did the community get? Fiscal 22 through 24, the library spent an additional $135,915 on things like programming and programming supplies. We also updated our website. We did an e-sign upgrade. We, of course, had that elusive building maintenance issues that needed to be taken care of. We had some consortium fees and materials from previous years that we needed to pay for, and also almost $5,000 in museum passes. So where did this money come from? So we received $13,000 from the Friends. We used about $52,000 in state aid and an additional 52 from the gift fund, which does include endowment money. Quote, "Unspent or unencumbered state aid monies must be carried forward into the next fiscal year for expenditure by the library. Interest earned on these monies, however, is a general fund revenue under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53, and must be returned to the city or town." All right. So we have currently our state aid balance on hand is $97,619. This was as of May 15, so I think I have spent a little bit. We have earmarked this money moving forward for public and staff computers that need to be replaced in 2025. We're also looking at security camera upgrades. The cameras we have in the building are original to the building. And then we are pricing cable broadcast equipment so the public can help hold meetings in the community room and actually broadcast them. We've had quite a few requests for that from residents. So also set aside for building maintenance and improvements, things like tree cutting, soft wash in the building, HVAC repairs, and also controls. Because as computers become outdated, the controls that run the HVAC system also become outdated, and those can be very expensive. So again, these are all costs that the library intends to cover with funds that are not covered under our fiscal budget. And now that I have your attention, I added three slides on just today, so we're gonna talk about good things.
There's more.
Right? So I would like to point out that all the services that the libraries provide above and beyond the books. So we have clubs, we have Wi-Fi, we have recreational activities like yoga. We do adult programming. We have genealogy, audiobooks, and so much more. You can fax, work, study, and even socialize at the library. If I needed someplace cool to hang out for the summer, I would definitely head to the library because we have outstanding air conditioning. There's something for everybody. And speaking of something for everybody, our summer reading program kicks off next Thursday. It's a half-day school. We're very excited. The theme this year is Read, Renew, Repeat. It is for adults, it is for teens, and it is for children. We are really excited to tell you about the sponsors that supported our community this year. We have over 100 prizes valued at over $2,000. And these are the local businesses that helped us out. Alls you need is a library card. So I hope everyone here gets a chance to sign up. Summer reading is about more than just about books. It's about what using the library means to you. So thank you for watching this presentation. If you have any questions, email me, call me, stop in for a tour, get a library card. We invite the community to use this wonderful resource that we have. This year, we've seen almost 30,000 visits to the library, and we would like to see that number doubled for next year. And just because I'm a librarian and a dork at heart, there is my reference.
I mean, the footnotes, I love it.
Yes.
Thank you, Nicole. Anybody have anything for Nicole? Board members? Mr. Sullivan.
So I had a chance to meet Nicole when she first got hired. I was on a little book kick there for a while. I was getting a book about once every week or so, it seemed like, and making fun of me because my library card still said Village Street on it, but it works. But no, the library's been doing a great job. I don't want to underemphasize that list of sponsors that have donated generously with time and gift cards and money towards that reading program, which, as we all know, is very essential for even the adults, but for the children, for the community. And there they are again. So if you have a chance to patronize some of those businesses, I'm sure they would appreciate it. I know some of them didn't even want credit for what they did, but there's a lot of nice people on that list. They all should be thanked publicly, and I thank them all. Thank you very much.
Also, Mr. Sullivan. Any else?
Mr. Chairman, just quick. There's a lot you get for so little. Again, what would be the process and cost for a library card that people don't know?
The cost for a library card to the public is zero.
Okay.
The cost for the town, it's immeasurable. Like, getting a library card and having a great library system brings up your property values. Makes us all smarter. It makes us part of a community. We have a great staff at the library. We are there to help anybody with any problem that they have. You know, if you need help with your computer, if you need help...if you feel lonely and you haven't had contact with people, come in and see us. Like, that's what we're there for. The library is gonna continue to change and move forward with whatever the community needs from it because that's what it demands, and we're gonna do it.
And the process?
Of getting a library card, driver's license. If you don't have a driver's license, come in with a piece of mail. You have to be five years old to get a library card. Mom and dad can sign you up. You can also sign up for a library card on the website and then just come in and pick it up. If you do not want a physical card, that's fine. You can get an e-card, and that way you can borrow eBooks and e-audio without actually having to come in and see us. If you need a tutorial, come see me. I'll teach you how to use Libby day and night. I love it. I love it. I'm always willing to come out of my office.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mr. Landry, Mr. Johnson.
Question about Libby you mentioned.
Yes.
Is that part of the consortium fees? Do you have to pay in so that you can have access to them?
Yeah. And so we have...Libby, you can purchase items through Overdrive. Overdrive allows you to share with all different libraries. So you can take your Dudley card and you can add, which is part of CWMARS, and you could add sales, which is a different part of the state, and kind of double down. Everyone here is also eligible for a Boston Public Library card to add to your Libby account and really, like, you can pretty much get whatever you want on Libby. We have the ability to purchase things and keep them just for Dudley residents. It's called an Overdrive Advantage. I can see how many people are waiting for items. We can release items when our patrons have fulfilled what they're looking for and share them with other libraries. It's a really cool thing. And there's add-ons, too, like you get Crafty, Craftsy. You can get indie flicks. You can watch Quello, operas. It's all right in that one little app. Does everyone here have a card? Everyone else is doing this. Come see us if you'd like a card. We'd love to give you one.
Mr. Chairman, it's cheaper than Amazon Prime.
It is, Mr. Johnson. Thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah, it ain't cheaper than zero. You don't need to chat and graph for that one, do you?
There it is. No, Nicole, you know, just like I said, it's the Dudley library is a treasure. You know, the community rallied to make sure that the library stayed open and funded, and everybody's thankful for that. So many programs you may not know about, like, you know, just one that's, you know, speaks to, you know, me and my family is Jessica. My daughter Jessica goes every Monday just about to watch, to listen to somebody read, and she just looks forward to it, and she, you know, tells us on her talker all the time. So she looks really, really looks forward to it. So doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for supporting us. We really, really, really appreciate it.
Thanks, Nicole. Come see us anytime.
Excellent presentation.
Thank you. Wonderful.
Mr. Chairman, I've spoken to Nicole in order to try and make this a quarterly update of happenings at the library.
Love it.
Have the library come back into the fold and have the town go back into the fold of the library and get the communication process up and running again.
I think that is a fantastic thing. Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
Anything else from a department update since you're in the fold now?
So our next...my next meeting will be...I'll just have our year-end numbers for you. How many people use the library, how many programs we've had, how many people we serve, and what we're looking forward to. We're ready...we're due for a five-year strategic plan. We do not have to have it filed this year per the Mass Board of Library Commissioners because we're not applying for one certain type of grant. So it's something that I'm gonna take very seriously, and we're gonna be looking for support for, you know, for people to sit on that board with us, so.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
Great update.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, other departments. Chief.
You got E.
Did I miss something?
E.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I scrolled down. Hang on, Chief. E. Chair recognizes the planning board representative to summarize the planning board recommendation of support of grant application letter for master plan update. Board of Selectmen to vote. Chair to sign letter of support or take any other action relative there, too. Mr. Horn is here.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'm here tonight with Trish Siddles from Central Mass Regional Planning Commission.
Thanks for coming.
We've been going over the last few meetings. We were looking into our master plan that some of you may or may not know is from the year 2000 with some of the data inside of the master plan dating back to the 1990 census. So it's a big necessity because it's state-mandated that we have a master plan, but our master plan is falling out of date quickly. And we always wanted to look into getting it updated, but it's a huge undertaking, and we really didn't know where to begin. So we started with Central Mass Regional Planning, and they were able to tell us about a grant that's upcoming deadline very quickly on Wednesday. So I'll let Trish give you the details on this grant and then explain the position we're in as a town right now for maybe being able to take advantage of this grant.
Hi, gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Again, my name's Trish Siddles. I'm the Deputy Director of Regional Collaboration and Community Planning at CMRPC, where they're a regional planning agency that serves the city of Worcester and 39 surrounding communities. It's been our pleasure to work quite a bit with the planning board and Bill Scanlon on a number of projects recently. One, as I drive into the parking lot, we're working on a grant to upgrade the park outside. But in addition to that, we're also, I think, we help the town with its green communities work, also with a gateway plan that Bill has been working with some of our planners, some site-specific economic development work. And I think most recently, we just finalized your open space recreation plan. We have a tremendous opportunity that Richard Clark actually came to us just recently and said, you know, our master plan is out of date. There's a current opportunity within the Commonwealth called the Community One-Stop Application. It's actually a bundle of several different programs that the Commonwealth will fund. It's one big portal that you submit your application to. It's up to $150,000, or you get bonus points if there's a match, and I'll come back to that in just a second. But it's for a variety of opportunities. Mass Works, which is one of the programs, there's a lot of other programs within that. We feel confident, and we've been very successful in getting some of our other communities funding to do their master plans. Master plans right now in the Commonwealth, $150,000 would do it. We could go more than that. We could go less than that, and we could do that in a phased approach, which is not ideal, but it's definitely possible. We've done that in a couple of communities with other grant programs. But so the Community One-Stop is actually due Wednesday afternoon at 5:00 p.m. We've been meeting...we met last week with the planning board, put together a scope of work, how we would work with the town to develop their master...your master plan, the budget and so forth. And we've done this, as somebody pointed out when we were meeting earlier, you can go onto our website. You can see that we've done several master plans for a number of our communities. I think there's about 11 or so. We're in the throes of wrapping up the Town of Spencer's right now. And there are definitely options. You can use other consultants to do that. As many of you may know, that as a government-to-government entity, agency, you can procure our services directly without going out for the costly and time-consuming bid process. So we're proposing tonight that we would assist the town in putting forth that application to the Community One-Stop application Wednesday at 5:00, by 5:00. I think Bill Scanlon is probably...has the means to put it in. We would type up and give you the scope of work and the budget. Our Executive Director Janet Pierce is kindly committing $15,000, which would be part of the city's...the town's match. With that, you get extra bonus points. It's something we feel that would actually...it's a fairly competitive process. It would be very in your interest to add that. The current budget is about $135,000. I'm gonna have it here someplace. It's about right.
$145,000.
$145,000. So it'd be $130,000 that we would be seeking from the state, $15,000 that we would bring to the table as part of your cash match, that skin in the game, which the Commonwealth really wants to see, for a total project cost of $145,000. So we put forth the application as part of that because we put in a lot of effort into developing the MOU, the scope of services. We'd ask for a memorandum of understanding. If you were awarded the grant, since we're bringing $15,000 into the equation, that you would then contract with us. That's the second part. And then finally, to make the grant application that much stronger, I think the planning board would want to set up a master plan committee. We feel master plans are really important. The Commonwealth is really good about funding things, but they won't fund it if you haven't written it down and said you've done some planning, community engagement. One of the things we talked about a little bit earlier is our process has been...it's worked out really well. We've done...we're in the process right now of working with Town of Spencer, Town of Grafton, Town of Berry. We've just started kicked off Lester and a number of other communities, and we've wrapped up a few in the last year. But a real wholehearted effort in the community engagement. It's really about surveys, engaging people in workshops, taking the questions, showing up at events like the bike rodeo, and talking to people, finding out what's important to them. Your 2000 plan, while it may have been perfect for them, we know that a lot of the world has changed since 2000. We've had COVID, a number of, you know, climate change is happening, the housing crisis, and a number of other things. So we feel this is a good time. It's never too soon to ask the community what they're...where they're at, how they feel. There are nine different elements that are included in every master plan that goes into the Commonwealth. And yes, Chapter 48 says, "A town shall have a master plan." Not a whole lot of teeth behind it if you don't, but it does say you shall have a master plan. Happy to answer any questions, but that's kind of the nuts and bolts of why we're hopeful to help the town of Dudley develop its master plan.
Thank you, Trish.
So I could just also add that earlier this evening, the planning board did meet. We had a special meeting before your meeting. We did vote unanimously to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Central Mass Regional Planning for this master plan. And we also voted to create a master plan committee, which we would have to have five to seven members of the public. And our town planner, Bill Scanlon, and probably at least one member of the planning board for this project, basically, so that we're, you know... We're basically showing the commitment to the people that are gonna be looking at the grant applications that were ready to go. The grant would not be...
Probably see it in September, November, somewhere in that time.
So we have time to get the committee together, but we wanted to vote that we were gonna commit, you know, commit and make a committee so that we...because we need it for the master plan to go forward. So that part is taken care of. Basically, what it comes down to is it's $145,000 worth of work as far as a new master plan. what it comes down to is it's $145,000 worth of work as far as a new master plan goes, and it would basically be at no cost to the town. So we're just here looking for your support, and if you could endorse it, give us a letter saying that you would endorse it, that we could include with our grant application, we would appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Board member?
Mr. Johnson.
So you're saying it's necessary and it's budget neutral?
Budget-friendly.
Budget-friendly.
Nearly budget.
It will still do, I mean, it's an intensive process. Yeah, no joke. It is, it's meeting with a master plan and the committee and the master plan will meet almost monthly, if not more than that. These are not small documents. You've seen master, we don't want them to sit on a shelf, though. Actually, or on a website, because most of them now reside as a, as an electronic document on, on the web. But the, the part that I think is really important is that implement, one of the elements in addition to housing and economic development and in town services and facilities, is the implementation strategy. So if you go back and look at the 2000 plan, that implementation strategy is going to look very different from what a 2025 implementation strategy will look like. And so there's a lot of effort that goes into it. There's a lot of research. There will be a lot of interviewing of town employees, workshops with town residents, probably a business workshop with some of the town businesses, a lot of engagement. And that requires a lot of, of developing materials, getting the word out, using all the tools, the Facebook pages that you guys have, and so forth.
Mr. Chairman, Paul, maybe I'll reword the question. So if it's, if it's budget-friendly and it's necessary, how much of the town effort do you need, other than the committee?
Probably your town planner at those meetings. He, he will be the, the point of contact, you know, as we're looking for information or looking for meetings to set up. He'll be the point of contact.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anybody else?
I'm good. That was pretty thorough. Thank you.
That's good. Mr. Chairman, I will mention that there's a letter of support asking the Board of Selectmen Chair to sign onto supporting this grant application. I don't know if you recall, but just before COVID, we had a master plan budgeted out at $100,000. It was, it was put in front of capital improvement for two years and it fell along the wayside. So I have spoken to Bill about this. He came to me a few weeks ago, and we've been looking for an opportunity. We've worked well in the past with CMRPC, and I think they're right. A good partner in order to help us get this done. There will be an appropriation, some matching funds, from my understanding, but I support it.
What's the board's pleasure?
Do you want the motion to read, Mr. Root, or just to sign the support letter?
Just a move. Vote to ask the Board Chair to sign the letter in support of updating the master plan.
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Landry, and seconded by Rich. Any other discussion? Myself. If a letter from me and my, with my other hat would be useful, I would like to do that. I've done something very similar for CMRPC for Charlton last week.
Be right.
So Guy, or, you know, if you could work, Michelle, and get that to me. I'll, I'll turn that around quickly for you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Great stuff.
Have a great night.
Good too.
Thank you.
A lot of good stuff.
Good stuff.
Very good.
Good stuff. All right. The planning board parts. Item nine, departments. Chief Carlowitz.
Just real quick, we wrapped up, the month of May was traffic enforcement provided by, funded by the state. We're starting another one for the month of June. Again, it's state-funded. Actually, this was one of the grants that Officer Magus wrote last year. So we'll be out there doing a little more radar, trying to slow people down.
Thank you, Chief. Dean?
Mr. Marcy's aware of this, but just last week, we received our annual Safe and Senior Safe Grant. These, this is a recurring grant every year, but it's imperative to our education program for the high school and the use of the Safe trailer throughout town and in the community. We receive Safe in the amount of $4,627 and Senior Safe for $2,140 for a total of $6,767. The Senior Safe portion of it goes towards smoke detector replacement for the over 55 community and some community programs on fire safety. Normally, this wouldn't be a big deal, but because of the budget crisis at the State House, it came out a lot later. A lot of these local programs, like the Homeland Grants and some of the other state grants, were cut by 10% across the board. Fortunately, Safe and Senior Safe wasn't affected, so we were able to get this grant again this year.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Any questions for Dean?
No.
Yeah, that's a good one. That was a nice surprise we got on Friday afternoon. Thank you, Chief. George.
Good evening. Just to let everybody know, this Saturday, we're going to have our ribbon-cutting ceremony at our water treatment plant. All are invited to attend, the public, officials, whoever, and get to see exactly where the money's gone to treating PFAS and how the system works and what's involved. It's at 112 New Boston Road, which is just at the beginning of New Boston, just past Bernie's, Bernie Service Center. You'll see the big sign there. Come right in, and it's the back of the, back driveway. And you'll be able to see the old pump station, how it gets overshadowed by the new treatment center. So there'll be some refreshments, and any questions people have will be able to be answered at that time. So we hope that we get a good showing. So, thank you.
Good day, George.
Thanks, George.
Thank you so much. MJ?
Just want to let everybody know that we are working on the rail trail paving project that is closed for walking till further notice. We should be ending up, finishing it up by the end of June. Hopefully, should be finished up. So I'll let everybody know on Facebook and when we're ready to open back up.
Awesome. Thanks, MJ.
Thanks, MJ.
Any questions for MJ or anybody?
No, sir.
Anybody else here? Any other? Rich not here today? Want to say a word or anything? No?
That was too much.
All right. All right. Student representative, I watched Vanessa graduate yesterday, so congratulations to Vanessa.
Mr. Chairman, that means she's not coming back for a third year?
No, she's not. She's moving on. Fun fact, since we talked about fun facts, that 25% of the Shepherd Hill graduating class is going to UMass Amherst. Fun fact.
Fun fact. 50% of Stephen Sullivan's kids went there.
That's right. All right. Item 11, board member comments. Mr. Johnson.
Well, it's election time, local elections. So really nice turnout from candidates on candidate's night for the local election. And one thought that always comes back to me is when you volunteer, do work for others, you're in an awkward position of doing what you think is best based on the inputs you receive and whatever experience you have before. Some will help, many will criticize, and many, many more will see the benefits of your work and sometimes the failures of your mistakes. If you have the urge to help others, be brave and trust yourself in those who share the same values as you do, and then volunteer. You'll be rewarded in the work if you truly want to help and potentially not in any other way. It's easy to complain, hard to do the work, so show up, have your voice heard, and even if you disagree with what you hear, be polite, don't demean others. That is how society will move forward. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Johnson. Thank you. Who usually goes next? Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, I just want to echo that. The election is coming up. Every race has at least one person. There's no, well, there's potential for write-ins, obviously, but it's nice to see people stepped up. Four members for one seat Board of Health, three for two Selectmen, three for two Planning Board. But I think the most important on that ballot is the, that exclusion question. The community at large showed up in 2022, passed it overwhelmingly. My understanding is all the work has now been completed, essentially. Now we have to pay for it. So whether you vote in the affirmative or in the negative, it doesn't really matter to me. I'm going to vote in the affirmative. But please show up and vote. Again, Mr. Johnson said it very elegantly. We try to lead, we try to take input. This is one that requires some input. People are going to give it a long, hard thought because if not, we have to come up with a source of funding somewhere else. So just please show up to vote, vote with your, with your head, and we'll see everybody on the other side, maybe.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Landry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to thank everybody for showing up. It's a great night tonight. Got promotions, got a lot of good stuff going on in the community library. And I'm very happy about that. I thought lead with the positive, and then you have the elections. I agree, be professional, get out there, be nice, respect everybody for their beliefs and what they're doing. And, and if you want to get involved, get involved. If you don't, that's fine, too. But just be nice about it and show up and vote. We need more people showing up, please. And if you see one of our Dudley's finest out there, when you're walking around or shopping, just say hi and thank them for doing a hell of a job for us. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Landry.
I'll go last.
Mr. Chairman.
Sure?
Yeah.
I have a lot to say.
Okay. Well, John, Chairman Sigunovich recognizes Representative John Marcy. That's on the agenda. 12 years?
Mm-hmm.
12 years. That, that's about the time I met you. About back then, I joined the FAA and I've learned a lot from you since then. John has this thing he always says. It's called assume positive intent. He always looks on the bright side, the positive side. Whenever we would think, or I would think something was negative, he'd, no, 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 assume positive intent. And, and I've taken that from not just here, but in my professional and personal life. So I thank you for that. Your demeanor, the way you are, everyone is comfortable speaking with you. Whether you're a Republican, way to the right Democrat, way to the left, or people in the middle, they all reach out to John because John listens. John is able to change his mind. He's, if you can convince him that there's a better way, he'll listen to you. And, and I think that's a, that's a trait to be admired. One of the old Greek philosophers said, "It's the sign of an intelligent mind to entertain a thought and not adopt it." You're an excellent father. That goes without saying. You really are. Yeah, we're going to miss you because you, you've done a lot for this town, and 90% of it people haven't seen. Behind the scenes, we've argued, we've shouted. I can say that about many people here. We have, and that's good government. That's good government when people disagree and they find somewhere in the middle. And you're, you're perfect to be state rep because you're not a politician, you're, you're a leader. And I think that's what everyone needs right now. We need leaders. We don't need theatrics. We need just solid, intelligent leaders. That's you. That's you, John. Last thing I'll say, your, your 12 years, you left this town better than when you found it. And I thank you for that. I'd reach, but we're not that close. Right there is a little certificate for you. Mark can put it underneath.
I'd like to read it.
It's on the teddy bear.
I'm sorry?
Nothing.
What?
He reacted like he just pulled a little pink bunny out of the house.
Well, pretty much he did.
This is signed by the entire board. It's the Town of Dudley, Board of Selectmen Public Service Citation. We don't give many of these out. Be it known that on behalf of the people of Dudley, we now recognize Representative John J. Marcy Jr. for his dedication and service to the Town of Dudley, serving our community for 12 years on the Board of Selectmen, including three as Board Chairman. This town wishes you continued success in representing Dudley to the Massachusetts General Court for the 6th Worcester District. And given under, given under our hands this third day of June in the year 2024, the four of us signed it. You didn't sign it because it's yours. Do you want to put this on the camera or something?
How do I do that?
Let's get a picture, anyway.
Thank you.
I'm not taking them with me.
Thank you. Can I get it up for anybody to see? Yeah, can we get closer up?
Wait a minute, I'll even do this.
Thank you. Can I have a close of this, please?
Oh, God, I brought this.
My hands are shaking.
Just a real quick, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, Mr. Marcy, before you, I'll give you a second to oppose yourself.
Yeah, thank you.
We were going to let Kerry go first. The rest of us did not, not say anything to you in that Selectmen's Congress. But I just want to take a moment to also thank you personally. You and I got on the same rotation 12 years ago, on same time. You and I never ran a negative campaign. You and I never ran spiteful campaign. You held my signs, I held yours. You picked up my signs after an election. We don't always agree. To quote Paul Joseph, but I don't always agree, or seldom wrong when we do. It's been an honor and a pleasure serving with you. I just wish you continued success. I know the 6th Worcester is in good hands with you running, and I look forward to holding your signs and casting my ballot for you again in November, if you run.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. You guys want to have anything before I go?
Anyone else want to pile on him? I'm waiting for the roast to start.
Oh, that's, that would have been more appropriate.
Better call the Chiefs up for that.
You missed the Peter Jankowski roast.
John, thank you for all you've done. Your professionalism and your, and your ability to work with anyone and everyone is the right way for government to, to work. So I appreciate your friendship and your leadership over the years.
Thank you.
Thank you, brother. Top that one.
So you helped bring me into this process. You helped me along. You've always been there. You've been good, given me direction, leading me where to go, showing me where the pitfalls are. You've always had great advice. I've always admired how you told Mr. Johnson what to do and say all the time. That was great. I just topped yours, by the way.
Yeah.
Okay. So I do want to appreciate every time that we got together. We had a good time, and I want it to continue, please.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Thank you, brother. Appreciate you.
Oh, wow.
Mr. Marcy, do you mind if I approach?
No, go ahead.
Citizen comment. For the record, I would like to thank John Marcy for all that he has done for Dudley in the last 12 years as Selectman. John reached out to me on Facebook during the municipal elections and override last year based on my posts on the Dudley Resident Facebook forum. He was kind and gracious and invited me to become and more involved in Dudley politics. When I originally told him that I wanted to run for Selectman, he advised me to start by running for a town board or get involved in a committee. We have been in frequent contact since then, and although we disagree politically, he has always listened to me and considered my position as I have his. In today's fractious political world, it is comforting and good for democracy for each side to listen to each other and remain friends. I am so thankful for John's commitment to our town, which has continued to his position as state rep. Our town will surely miss him as Selectman, but we are well represented by him in the State House. Thank you, John, for always listening to residents and making decisions based on constituent feedback. Thank you for inspiring me to become involved as I am running for Board of Health. I can't speak for everyone...
I was going to write something, and I figured, you know, this is going to come from me. Between the 12 years, as been mentioned, you know, my time on the FAA, you know, helping out with Cub Scouts and baseball, you know, I've given over, well over a quarter of my life to Dudley, and I don't regret one minute of it. I'm glad I got involved all those years ago. Thought I had something to offer, and it brought me here. I'd like to think that I got a calling to, you know, use what skills I had to, you know, bring to the table to do what I wanted, which was to leave Dudley a better place than I found it, you know, from, in this role. So thank you for all the kind words, guys. I appreciate you all. Just a lot of the things that we've done over the years, I mean, it's been, like I said, a quarter of my life ago. You know, we think about the contentious things, we think about the, you know, the hard work. You know, sometimes things take a long time to get done, you know, like you start a project, you know, and then, you know, 10 years later, it might come to fruition because the wheels of government turn slow. It's not where I could put my VP Operations hat on and go in and fix it, but it doesn't, doesn't work like that sometimes. I'm proud of the things we're able to accomplish. Just a few things off the top of my head, working, you know, with Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Ruda to get our 24/7 paramedic level coverage. Coverage is one of the things that I, you know, I think about all the time, that there was a need, and we found a way to do it, guys. We have a new fire station that we all worked hard, took two tries, but we got it. Dudley stepped up and did it. All the times that we funded our schools, you know, the sausage-making is difficult, and, you know, a lot of people, you know, sometimes don't like how that sausage gets made. Sometimes they want fennel. We don't want fennel, you know, too much fennel, you know. Roberto was here, she'd agree with me. But, you know, all this stuff ends up, it always ends up working out. That's one of the things. We have, I have the benefit of wisdom, and I have learned over the years that it takes time and effort to, you know, make some of those things happen. I'd like to think that people made me a better person, too, being, listening more, seeing other points of view, as I figure out, like, what, you know, what we were working on in a given, on a given week. Like Mr. Siganovich said, 90% of this role happens behind the scenes when you're talking to people, you're on the community, or you're on a subcommittee, or you're working with the department heads or residents, more importantly. That's, that's the best part of the job, right? So thank you to the residents who've placed your trust in me all these years. It's a, it's a weight that I carried proudly. It's part of who I am, and I don't take that very lightly at all. Thank you to all the department heads I've worked with over the years, you know, Chief Carlwitz, Chief Weiner, you know, Chief Kochinowski, MJ, Jeff, and Danny, the Highway, George, you've been there for a long time. Mr. Carmianni's been there the whole time. Mr. Zakowski, thank you for your friendship and all that you've brought to this town. Joyce, Monica, Mr. Clark, everybody, Olivia, thank you, guys. Michelle, I couldn't do this job without you and keeping all the, all the cats in the box, which were the cats. And, and you've done that fantastic all these years, and I thank you for that, and I wish you nothing but the best in retirement. Debbie, keeping, keeping the communication lines open on Facebook, you know, was something we needed, and I'm glad you're here. I thank my, my family, my Anthony, my Jessica, and my world, my girl Lucy, who pushes me forward, you know, to try new things, to make myself uncomfortable, you know, so I can grow further as a person. And I thank you, guys. Jay, your friendship got me to the IPA bug that came from you. Mr. Siganovich, you know, gave me the palate. You got me the, the bug for that. I appreciate a fellow engineer on this board that understands, you know, the need for charts and graphs. It's important. I appreciate your wisdom and that you, what you bring to the table. Mr. Landry, your very analytical mind, you know, is very, very, very useful up in this board. You know, you talk to a lot of people behind the scenes, and you are probably the, one of the most well-prepared selectmen that I've ever worked with. So thank you, Mark, for all that you do. I appreciate your friendship. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention my friends Peter Fox and Paul Joseph. Lot of stories there. I really appreciate all that they did. Peter Fox is probably the best statesman Dudley's had in many, many, many years. Mr. Joseph was the, you know, the balance of the board. Paul and I, we fought at the beginning, got a healthy respect, and he became my very, very good friend, and I, I'm appreciative of the both of them. Kerry, thank you for being there for me and, you know, listening back to me, whereas you're talking to me, I was, you know, doing the same to you, and I appreciate that. You've, you've come so far as a selectman in the last year, I can't even, I can't even say enough about you, just listening, communicating, conversations. Don't stop, don't stop asking questions. Thank you for all you do. Steven, my running mate, I'll say it. Nobody beats the mailman, the bartender. I only beat him once, the high-vote getter, once out of four tries, and he was in the hospital the first time, fun fact.
25 days.
He was not a breathing machine, for God's sake.
I know, but, no, it just goes to show that Mr. Sullivan is always there. We just had an amazing Memorial Day, a put-on by our team, and it just, when you see Mr. Sullivan in the wild, so to speak, you really begin to understand the man they call Sully. And I treasure you as a friend, like I do all of you, but you, I will be proud to vote for you on Monday, Sully.
Tuesday, it's going to come Tuesday.
Tuesday. Tuesday.
Oh, conspiracy. Uh-oh.
Jonathan?
Stop the steal.
Thank you. We, you, you got on right before I did on this board, and, you know, we worked together on a lot of things. You, you taught me how to be a selectman and how to act, how to, how to look at things. You knew more about Dudley than I did. You showed me the way, and you've been a friend ever since, and I treasure that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All you've done.
Thank you.
And I'm talking a lot, so I'm going to try to wrap this up, but when you sit up here, like I said, you have a great responsibility. If you're doing it for the right reasons, and you keep doing it for the right reasons, you know, people will support you. And you, and those are the people that I'll continue to support, you know, on this, in this position. But I'm not going away. I get to support Dudley in a much, you know, bigger scenario, and I, and I'm learning. Other towns that are getting to know me, Charlton, Saltbridge, and Spencer, and that has been a fantastic learning experience and getting stuff done. You know, I mentioned earlier some of these big issues that take 10 years to work on. We had a, we've been working on the mill, this board, for over 10 years, and one of the things that came out today was, the governor's been talking about it for a while, but a housing bond bill. And it's just a bond bill, which means that it's not, you know, money that you put in for, but I'm proud to say that I put in some amendments for Dudley today to, you know, set aside some money. Basically, it'll allocate a source of funding that we can use, and I did one for the mill because it's important that Dudley gets that mill up and running because Dudley deserves to have something nice there and help with our, our housing stock. I also put something in for our Housing Authority as well. But these are the, these are the things that I'm able to do in my new role. So I'm, I'm not going away. You'll see me here at some meetings. It has been an honor of a lifetime. I deserve you in this role. Again, it's been part of my persona for a long time, and I will miss it, you know. It's, even when, in the, when it gets really tough over the last year, you know, it's still, I was still driven forward because I felt the call to serve, and I'm proud that I'm able to continue to serve Dudley, and, and I will. I have been and always shall be your servant. Thank you. Thank you for everything. Thank you. Thank you. On that note, Mr. Landry, will you lead us into executive?
Mr. Marcy, could I just, board member comments. I didn't want to cloud this comment with-
Oh, oh, sorry.
With your piece. Last live meeting, I sat here and I read a statement relative to the animal inspector, the current health inspector, and the Board of Health. I just wanted to clarify that that statement was me. That was not a vote of the Board of Selectmen, that was not by unanimous consent, that was from me speaking with town council. Just wanted to clarify that, so if there's any issue with that, it's me. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Before we go into, can I just, we have a suggested motion under item 12. Could I ask whoever moves that motion for both items, instead of, say, and not to reconvene into public session, please say may reconvene into public session to take a vote in this room? Okay? Just because it's, we're talking about two contracts, and we have to make sure we vote those in an open session in this room.
Okay. Mr. Landry, would you like to do that?
Yes, sir. I'd like to move to convene into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, subsection 2182, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and may reconvene in public session to vote in this room.
Fire chief and MGL, Chapter 30A, subsection 2183, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair, so declares IFA, IAAF contract.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Landry, seconded by Mr. Siganovich. Roll call vote.
Michael Landry, aye.
Kerry Siganovich, aye.
Steven Sullivan, aye.
Jay Johnson, aye.
John Marcy, aye. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.